Thank you all for being here tonight. As we begin our regular council meeting, January 25th, 2018. I'm going to ask Mr. Manning if you would come forward and leave us in our invocation and pledge to the flag, if everyone would please stand.
I give you fathers, we come to tonight for a meeting. Ask you, Lord, take this meeting tonight, Lord. Use it the way you see fit tonight, Lord. Bless each one here, Lord. Let's want to come out and want only counsel the mayor of the city of Manning for each one more. Help those who sick, Father, touch their bodies, Father. Come on over to death, ain't no vision, come to our home, Father. How long wait, Lord? Not, I will, but Lord, I will, to be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited to death and sin.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator, if we could have the roll call, please.
Here, Amber.
Here.
Ms. Mearsall.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Heldon.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
City Mayor Drubio.
Here.
City Attorney Lewis.
Here.
Counsel, I trust you've had opportunity to review the items in the consent agenda. It would be approval of the January 11th Agenda Work Session minutes, the regular council meeting minutes from January 11th, and also the December 2017 financial statement. Do we have a motion in regard to consent agenda? We have a motion to approve and a second. Could have the roll call, please.
Ms. Mearsall.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
I was absent from the January 11th meetings while I was staying. At this time, we will entertain communication from citizens who are a resident of the city of East Ridge or business owner here in the city, and you have a common question or concern you'd like to bring to the council. This would be your opportunity to do so. We do have a sign-in sheet, and so what I will do is go down the list here, and then we will come back through, and if you didn't have opportunity or didn't notice signing, we'll make sure that you have opportunity to come address the council as well. Right, right. You will have five minutes, and when you come forward to one of the two microphones here at the front, you'll need to state your name and address for the record. And the one and only person that we had sign in is Jeff Fisher, 804 Harris Lane. Mr. Fisher, if you'll come forward.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Jeff Fisher. I live in Harris Hills, area 804 Harris Lane, and I have a concern about our neighborhood. The renters in the home next to me, 802 Harris Lane, have built a kennel containing six enclosures. Since those kennels have been in place, there's been dogs in here day and night. They bark constantly. Last Friday evening on the 19th, the renter came to my house and apologized for the dogs barking, showed a box with a bark collar. Said he was installing these on all the dogs, and just putting up a privacy fence. He went on to say these were all, he said he had five dogs. They were all his personal pets, and if I didn't sign his petition, the city was going to remove his fifth dog that was his mother's personal pet, and she had suffered a stroke, and this was, her only solace was this dog. Had a house full of company, it was the middle of the night, I didn't want to get into a confrontation, I signed man's petition. Ten minutes later, a neighbor who saw this gentleman walking, the neighbor was trying to get signatures, came to my house and showed me documentation that the man had a, I'm giving these to the city here, had a website, has a website that advertised his address as a breeding and kennel facility. He also had recently changed it to a single minded road address. I printed that off, brought that in, looked that up, that's a UPS store, so he's obviously rented a mailbox over there. So I was a little upset about what he had said to me, that I kind of had been conned. So Monday, I came in with a notarized document, removing myself from his petition. I also need to say that my wife and I were both off from the 15th to the 18th of this month, when it was in the teens, one night it was single-digit temperatures, those dogs were in those enclosures all night, all day, all three days. So since these renters have moved in in early fall, there's been an average of 10 cars a night parked in the driveways. It's now down to eight, when I wrote this letter this afternoon, it was eight. The wife and I go to bed at 10, it's around 5:30. Their garage is always open, they're doing work with power tools, they were working sheet metal, I don't know if they were working on the car or whatever, but there's been several neighbors, including myself, that have been upset about this and have brought this to the attention, so I just wanted to make sure that you would consider doing what's ever legal to do to stop what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming forward to share your concern. Okay, do we have another who would like to come to address the council? Yes, sir. If you'll just come to one of the two microphones here at the front and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brady Sewell. I live on the 60th, 60th of Hill Drive. That's considered the mountain heights area. A lot, me and a lot of my neighbors, we've been very concerned of some activity that's been going on in that area. Specifically, I'm talking about the Waverly Park area. In the past few weeks, there's been some major issues that's developed from major drug busts, bringing validated crime members out, weapon charges, officer been injured, and a lot has been initiated by Chief Reed, which I so much welcome, he is really a great control from that area. There's got to be an end point, there's got to be an answer. Waverly is not a good neighborhood, not the neighbors of the city, and not the neighbors for us. Where we're spending begging millions of money on the exit one, Waverly exists right there in the exit one. It's time for them to go. I know you can't talk about it, but it's time for them to go. I mean, I had the question, I've been posting things, but when is it up for him? How long do we have to endure? It used to be Waverly, before the MAP code was there, Waverly was open up to people. Now that MAP have come in, and they put a fence, they hid away with it, it's put more into our neighborhood. And it's just, it's time. We've got families and kids, we don't need that activity. And I would say if these, if the owners ever get involved in it, or if they're starting, how do they run the business? If the owners ever been asked to sign a contract, this is what we're going to do to better our business. There's got to be a starting point, there's got to be an end point. Now, I've done a tremendous job, I've cleaned up some of the tables, this is one that needs to go.
Well, I appreciate you sharing your concern, for sure, and I wouldn't say too much. I know that I've had conversations with the owner, I know Ted Benjamin Miller has, Kate We are, we're looking at several potential solutions to, to that, and that would include redevelopment of that property. So I don't know if maybe Chief Reed has anything that you would like to mention, but we-
Any redevelopment is still going to put it in our neighborhood.
Well, it would not, it would not remain until, it would be something that-
In most cases, the redevelopment, the redevelopment would entail the tearing down that property and building something of a commercial nature, not another hotel.
My, I appreciate you listening to me. We are just very concerned for what's going on in that area.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Chief Reed, because a lot of this has been all about the funds they have re-stepped up there in front of me. And, well, I very appreciate you listening to me.
Well, we, we appreciate you taking the time to share your concern with us, and we, I think we, we understand there are issues related to that property.
Again, thank you.
No, thank you.
Hold on, I want to tell you something.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'll walk right through this down to that area. What is the state you're known living in, that they was not supposed to have that happen? I'm sorry, they lived in, in living-
Better than Larry.
They have a certain amount of time they could stay without saying this.
On the extension, we're talking about the extended stay. It was robbed about back in, I think it was June, July of 2016. We never, we never filed last night.
I think, can you correct me if I'm wrong, there is some language-
Yes.
-that exists that would not allow a, essentially a permanent residence to be set up in a hotel or hotel.
Yeah, that's correct. As it's currently written, it's 30 days, so the, some hotel owners have, when they did the original renovations, they have an apartment, they live there, they're the head keeper, and that's, that's their permanent address. Their children would be a little bit different than somebody that just moves in, brings their stuff, and stays there, you know, and they look after the property. If that is noticed, that gives us probable cause or reason to go down and start asking questions, checking registers. As a matter of fact, my inspectors have been looking at a couple other rentals doing the same thing over the last couple weeks.
I got, I got a notice today to start picking up the child's parent paper.
Okay.
So I don't have a written up, but just, we're making this talk.
We'll address it in the morning.
Councilman Sewell, you bring up a good point. If any of the neighbors, if anybody sees any of this thing going on, we need to know about it. This gives us, this gives us just a low, gives us probably cause to go in there and check the register. If we've got a notice to get kids out, that's not opening statute.
Here we go.
And we don't want that.
There's a gentleman, I'll tell you about, after the meeting.
All right, do we have another who would like to address the council? The city of, we will move to communication from council members. Ms. Hilton?
Well, I actually just received a Facebook message from the owner of the property to Harris Lane, and I'd like to read it for the neighbors of Harris Hills. Hello, Esther, this is Wendell Feldman. I own the property across from you on Harris Lane. As you may know, I've been leasing the house to Ben Devall, who is apparently having issues with some of the neighbors. I am hoping it's insignificant, but today I heard that there apparently is a public meeting tonight that will include complaints and/or a possible request for a variance to the neighborhood rules or the East Ridge city ordinances. I'm contacting you to confirm the following. I am still the property owner, there is no agreement in place for anyone else to own that property, and I will be in favor of whatever the neighbors need to be satisfied. I would hope that if anyone is applying for any type of permit, they would have to include the owner of the property. I am not sure why rules and regulations exist, and have heard various things that are different. I need to catch up and find out what the rules actually are. I am in favor of the best remedies for the neighborhood. I have leased the property to Mr. Devall only for single-family residential use, excluding commercial use. I look forward to anything you can advise on the situation. Thanks, we adopt that.
Thank you for the way you approached it. Certainly, it, it's enlightening. Mr. Williams?
I have nothing to learn.
Mr. Sewell, we've got a patrol, a scoop patrol ladies, and it's got some, there's a care report, we've got a body to keep our prayers. I think we'll figure out what time for the loss.
Mr. Cagle?
No, sir.
I do not have anything at this time either, and so I will ask the city manager if he has anything for us.
Yes, I just want to announce we're going to have a grand opening, ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday, February 1st at 10:00 a.m. Is Chief Williams still here? I know he's been with the flu most of this week. Now we open to the public, so please feel free to stop by. We're down there on St. Thomas, off of Ringo Road, so that would be again Thursday, February 1st at 10 o'clock in the morning. Please, if you have the opportunity, stop by. That's it, thank you.
And that is fire station number two.
Yes.
And it has just been completed within the last month or so, and it is a, I think it'll be a wonderful resource for the community, and certainly that end of town. It's, it's a beautiful place, and I know the fire department, all of the, the folks who work in that department are appreciative and definitely enjoying that as well. All right, we will move to, before we get into old business, I do want to ask the council's indulgence to look at items E and F under new business, if we could possibly move those forward. I know there are a lot of folks here in regard to those two items, and I don't want to make them wait through the, through the entire meeting. Yes, E, G, I apparently have an old copy of the- I'll pass it to you. Not sure when the change was made, I did not get that update. All right, so, pardon the interruption, items F and G, which will be a request from River City Corvette Club to waive the fee for use of Kendo Arena for eighth annual classic car show on August 4th, 2018. Do we have any comments or questions? I imagine-
I highly recommend it. They're good folks. They give back anywhere from $2,500 to $3,000 to our needy child fund on an annual basis, which would be more than they would be paying if they were just paying for rent for that one day anyway, and we're proud to partner with them, it's a good organization.
Very good. We have a motion to approve and we have a second? Hang on. We have a second? Any comments or questions? We have the roll call, please.
Ms. Mearsall.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lake.
Yes.
That item is approved, and now item G, an update on the East Ridge Needy Child Fund.
Yes, gentlemen, I wanted you all, I know you all individually recommended several of us to put together a board for the East Ridge Needy Child Fund. You probably have never sent us all at once, and since you all don't know everybody, this is the board, the great board. I've served on many boards, as you all don't know, with the city. You outdid yourself here. Not many of us even knew each other. It worked so perfectly, you all did an excellent job recommending who we got. We need to thank Mark Lisch for doing all our paperwork for us to make us legal, which was kind of iffy when we were trying to get our sales tax. And I must not forget to thank Mark Rabbit. We had a little fuck poo with the IRS papers, and Mark Rabbit helped us get our, we had the, I had all the information in, but he kind of helped it move along a little bit faster so we could start buying to get our sales tax exempt status. I guess we all hear. And where's Earl? We had a board meeting that night, we are adding to our group, and we're basing it on our volunteers. Our three new board members so far, we got from being volunteers. I don't know if y'all know, we had a volunteer meeting at the beginning, we had 45 people show up, which shocked us all. And fortunately, many of them kept showing up. Will anybody who helped us this year, please stand up? This is what your citizens are capable of. I've got a couple of figures for you. This year, we raised $46,480.84. Had to stand out in the cold and the rain and whatever else happened in order to make that happen, and plus going out and getting us boxes and all sorts of things donated. We spent, with our expenses, $19,100. So as of the other day, we have right at $52,000 in the bank after we pay off. One of the major donors of this, and he's going to kill me. I'd like to recognize Herman Traider, who, some of you are happy over Hilton Hill, some of you weren't happy.
It doesn't matter, Herman was the best.
Herman was our biggest fundraiser of the year. It was a surprise fundraiser, and it was unbelievable. This man stood up in the rain, snow, sleet, and whatever, with the rest of us, taking donations every single night. Not only did enough money come in for that, but Herman made a sizable donation to the community kitchen, and how many truckloads of food?
All seven.
Seven huge truckloads of food went to the community kitchen. This is what your community can do if you let us do it. And we didn't have any fights, politics, or anything involved. That was so great about this board. It is the most non-political board that's ever been put in this city. We serviced 56 families this year, 160 kids. Those 160 children, each received shoes, coats, underwear, socks, two pants, two shirts, and an abundance of toys. We really appreciate the status that the East Ridge Fire Department left this in, it was amazing. Had it not been for their toy room over here and the stuff that they did in the past to make it work, our numbers would be a whole lot different. So I hope you all realize what this community can do, because there's going to be another project coming up, he's going to kill me on this one. We want to do the playground next. Not this group, but the community wants to do the playground next. So we'll be having fundraisers throughout the year.
Thank you, baby.
Well, I know, but I just want you all to see how great this community is. You hear a lot of bad stuff. You won't hear anything bad coming from the volunteers or these people. We had kids helping us put together stockings, we had senior citizens, we had every kind of somebody you could possibly imagine, they came together, and I think we all had a good time.
Yeah, we did.
It was a lot of hard work, but everybody smiled through the whole thing. So I want to thank you all for putting us all together, and wait till you see what we pull out next year.
Well, thank you, I'm sorry, they speak for themselves, but you know, on behalf of the council, I just want to say thank you and congratulations on a wonderful job. The difference you make in the life of a family, kids who may not have had anything on this business.
Y'all learned that, I believe, this year. We saw it, and I hadn't seen it in real life, and you have, the other ones have, but they saw things that sure they had no idea happened to East Ridge.
And we had the best set of applause.
We had the best. One of my- The jolly old man at the back door was the best of applause in the entire world. Oh, you know, that was anything else, just like-
Well, thank you, and I will say this about Hilton Hill. I've been going there for years and years, my kids love it, we go through multiple times every year. You really outdid yourselves this year, it was fabulous. I think we went through right after Thanksgiving, and we may have gone one other time in the point, but then we went Christmas night as well, and we actually had a chance to get out, walk around a little bit, they're just wonderful, really wonderful. Thank you. That is, that is a great piece of news, a great update on what's going on here with the needy childhood that is being asked about.
That block we need to like, put this committee here on, like, the campus building, two
They may get recruited to do several things. All right, what I would like to do now is if we can, return to, to old business, and item A, ordinance number 1062 on second final reading.
In order to the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at 1403 Sawani Drive, tax map number 169K dash E dash 012, C2 General Commercial District and R1 Residential District. R1 Residential District.
Thank you, motion, please. We have a motion and a second? Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mearsall.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lake.
Yes. Item is approved. Item B, ordinance number 1063 on second final reading.
In order to the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the East Ridge City Code Title 14, Chapter 1, Section 14 dash 101, Title Creation of Membership in Regard to the East Ridge Plan and Commission.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Hang on.
We have any comments or questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The way we have changed this thing, we have changed the mayor in good terms, and that mayor come in and then- The way we have changed this thing, uh, we have changed the mayor and red term, and that mayor come in and then red designate name? Or is he still there for the conclusion of that term?
I believe the designate is, Mark, you correct me if, if I'm wrong on this, I believe the designate is up to the current mayor at that time. So if, if there is a change in the mayor, then that designate will, could potentially change with the new mayor.
The way I read it said, for the conclusion of the term of the mayor.
That's correct, yeah.
So that's right.
Two steps down and then.
Do we have any other comments or questions? Call call, please.
Vice Mayor Sill.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
Item C, discuss and or take action on corporate salary increase.
I think, yeah, we've had some, uh, some previous discussion, uh, there's been, it's, uh, information provided to the council. And at this point, it is, uh, up to the council as far as whether we want to proceed tonight, be due to time.
This is tabled at last council meeting, but to this meeting, it had to be put back on the table to be.
If it was tabled to this meeting.
Yes, sir.
Then it does not. If it was just tabled, then it would need to be pulled.
It was tabled to this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion, we tabled to a later date, if, uh, we could give some more information on stuff that here is going on.
We have, uh, we have a motion to table. Do we have a second? Second. We have a second. We have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sill.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Laver.
Yes.
Okay, under new business, item A, ordinance number one zero six four.
An order to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee to allow the City of East Ridge to accept credit and debit cards as additional forms of payment for all monetary transactions.
We actually, uh, the council voted to approve accepting credit cards as a form back of Gipper fourteen, two thousand and eleven, however, we never followed up with an enabling ordinance, which will make the law. So, this is on for you tonight, with credit cards, and now that most people are using debit cards rather than credit cards, we've added debit to, to some sort of, we now may obtain credit cards and debit cards from the given formally on our books as a law.
Motion for it.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second to approve, do we have any comments or questions?
Do we, uh, do we know possibly the percentage or the amount that, because there's charges with these credit cards, so will we reduce the amount of, of income that impact budget? Where, I know it's probably minimal, but it's usually thirty-five percent, credit card surcharges?
It's probably, from what I understand, it's usually one and a half to two percent.
Good.
And yes, it is, it, it does affect, uh, most people, it's, it's, it's a good practice to give to people, because most people do not carry cash.
I'm not dis, discount that.
It's convenience, it's convenience.
The entire.
We already budgeted.
Okay.
It's already in the budget, and it's just right at two percent. Yeah, and some, some months we don't have a lot, but other months we have a lot. For example, over thirty thousand dollars, there's some of this, this credit cards, debit cards. People don't care cash.
So you don't get a six hundred dollars. Just, just pull that jump.
Okay. Chair, if we can have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sill.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
Item is approved. Item B, Resolution two, two seven four four.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee Appointing Blank to the Position of Administrative Hearing Officer.
It's, uh, we had a reception prior to the agenda work session today for our outgoing Administrative Hearing Officer Kyle Hedrick. He, of course, was, uh, appointed by Governor Bill Haslam to, uh, succeed Judge Neil Thomas. And so, with him taking that position, he is no longer going to be available to East Ridge as our Administrative Hearing Officer. Uh, he also worked for the City of Collisdale in Red Bank, in that position, and in fact, as we talked about earlier, he was the first Administrative Hearing Officer of the State of Tennessee, uh, was here in East Ridge. We actually helped push that legislation through, and, uh, so he was a, a trailblazer in a lot of ways for East Ridge. So now, that leaves us with the need to appoint a new Administrative Hearing Officer. And I understand there are, there may be a couple of folks here, uh, who, who may have some interest in, in that position, uh, and, and certainly, if, if those folks would like to, to make themselves known, we could entertain a comment or two. I think I personally probably need additional information before I, I would feel comfortable appointing someone. But again, if, if someone would like to, you know, to make a comment, uh, if you're here, like I said, you may not be here, uh, there may not be anyone, but I, I thought there were maybe a couple who, who had expressed an interest in being here tonight, so, uh... But certainly, if you'll make, either during this meeting or after this meeting, if you'll make yourselves known to council and, and maybe provide some information, uh, as far as what your background is and, uh, what your qualifications may be, I, I, I think council would, would welcome that. Again, I mean, to speak for the council, but I, I don't know that I've gotten enough information.
If they'd like to come up and, right, speak a little bit.
Absolutely, if someone would, just introduce yourselves and, uh, yep. Any comments you might like to make?
Good evening, my name is James Exon, I'm an attorney here in Chattanooga, with the law firm of William Stiller in Polton. Uh, I've been practicing for about twelve years, uh, at this law firm here in town. Uh, most of my practice is litigation, I'm a trial lawyer, I incorporate, uh, law experience defending criminal entities, I've been on board on behalf of the county department of education, uh, various losses that they've, uh, been faced with. Uh, most of my other practice is general litigation, construction, uh, issues like that. Uh, I was one finalist, uh, along with Judge Hedrick, um, submitted to Governor Haslam. Judge Hedrick got it, he's done a fantastic job, continues to do a great job, uh, going forward, but I talked to him about this, and, um, he was very encouraging about step forward and apply for this position. So, uh, I'm intensely resident, I live on Silver Mountain, uh, certainly, yeah, Silver Mountain, cyclical condition, which, uh, basically, we try to make commercial property, you know, it's a lot of, a little difficult, and they want to redo their property, but, uh, I've been serving since, uh, January of seventeen, so about a year at this point. Um, my wife is an attorney as well, we have a little boy, a four-year-old, so I think I would love the opportunity to discuss this with y'all further. Maybe I have my resume, I have completed my NTS certification with the State of Tennessee, I want to serve as a MJO, um, currently applying for Judge Hedrick's other position as well, with the City College Dental City, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
If you do have, you have a copy of your resume that you could leave with us, I would, I mean, that would be wonderful, and, uh, I think that would be, would be very helpful.
You'd like to pass them on, or?
That, that would be great, yeah, if you could just get it to, to get it there, yeah, we'll...
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Chris Arson, I'm also interested in the Administrative Hearing Officer position. Uh, I'm also an attorney, I practice with the law firm of Patty and Young, uh, down in Regal, Georgia, I'm licensed in both the state of Georgia and the state of, uh, Tennessee. We have a general practice, we, uh, you know, we're sort of a small town firm, we take, we have a lot of local resident clients, and we handle whatever issue, uh, that comes at the door that they need handling. Probably our biggest client is, uh, the county, is Catusa County, uh, our firm serves as the, as the county attorney for Catusa County, and as part of those responsibilities, uh, my biggest responsibility as part of that, um, product line is that I am the attorney for the planning and zoning commission for Catusa County, and I prosecute all of the zoning ordinance violations that occur within the unincorporated districts of, uh, Catusa County. And so some of these issues that some of your residents here have brought to, uh, the council's attention, those are the same types of issues, um, I deal with on behalf of Catusa County. Um, and I do have a special interest in that area of law, it's very interesting, you know, we've got, there's, there's a tension there, you've got, you know, the rights of property owners, property owners want to be able to do what they want to do with the property, but at the same time, they've also got to be a good neighbor, uh, and that's a delicate matter, uh, and it's, it's something, um, that, you know, doesn't require handling, it requires a delicate handling, but at the end of the day, uh, property owners do have to be coming along. You know, I know, I don't live in, uh, the state of Tennessee, I live across the border in Regal, but if anyone has any doubt, I'm a East Ridge, uh, credentials, my first job actually, I grew up in Regal, went to Regal High School, my first job was as a busboy at, uh, Trent Seafood, uh, down the road, so many of these, uh, citizens, I've probably, uh, cleaned up after it's great hush buckets off the carpet that may have dropped back there, uh, cleaned the bathrooms at the end of the night, so, uh, those are my East Ridge, uh, credentials. Uh, like Mr. Exon, if anybody has any questions, uh, I'll be answering, I'll be happy to answer those. I didn't bring a resume with, with me, but I can certainly, um, get those to you all and, uh, make sure each other have a copy of that as well.
That would be great. Yeah, thank you very much, thank you very much. And just so everyone knows what, what exactly we're talking about with an Administrative Hearing Officer, back in two thousand and eleven, the, uh, State of Tennessee adopted, uh, a statute that would allow municipalities to create the position of the Administrative Hearing Officer, allowing for code violations to come in front of the AHO, the Administrative Hearing Officer, rather than going to city court. So basically, it allows the process potentially to, to move a little faster, but it also allowed for a stiffer penalty, frankly, uh, for, for those people who did not come into compliance. Uh, if they had, uh, just random example, if they've got grass that is shoulder high, uh, and they refuse to cut their grass, there could potentially be a pretty stiff penalty, much, much stiffer in, in front of the Administrative Hearing Officer than there would be in city court. Uh, so, what, uh, Judge Hedrick expressed to us earlier was, was his experience, is that he may be notified one week that, you know, there are seventeen citations that were issued, so potentially seventeen cases, but the day before, they were supposed to appear before him, there may only be one that failed to comply, and that is ultimately what we were after, we want compliance, it, it, cut your yard, you know, do those things that, that unify your property and, and make your, make your neighbors reasonably happy, uh, and it, it benefits all of us. So, that's what we're talking about when we talk about the Administrative Hearing Officer, that's, that's its purpose, uh, so again, if, uh, you know, if, I would welcome certainly inquiries from, from anyone who might have an interest. Thank you both, Mr. Arson, Mr. Exon, for, for being here tonight, and, uh, certainly, this is something, I don't think we have any cases that are pending, and so we've got a little bit of time, uh, but obviously, we'd like to fill this position as quickly as possible.
Mayor, could we, uh?
Yes, sir.
These two gentlemen here sound like they're really qualified for the job, could we, uh, advertise, uh, how to get more resumes in?
We certainly could. Yeah, certainly, it's an option that's available to us, and, uh, yep, I think, I think probably we could, we could post it on the city's website. I don't know how far, you know, normally, when, when we would be attempting to find someone, we'd put it in the, like, a T M L newspaper, I don't know that we, I don't know that we need to do that.
I don't see anything in there about it, uh, I see the qualifications, the number of years for the term, I don't see no salary ceiling, so...
So, city manager, if, if you wouldn't mind, uh, exploring this?
No problem, I can have, I can advertise, that's desired, the council's sure.
Counsel, what do you think? You know, obviously, we don't want the three hundred resumes to, to send through, but, you know, I, I think it could make some sense to, uh, to see who else is out there who may have an interest.
Agreeable to that.
I'd be open to that, would the, uh, Mr. Miller, uh, go through them, and maybe our attorney here go through them, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we, we, we'll, we'll.
Oh, that would be up to us potentially, uh, counsel, I mean, we could, we could determine that.
I'm in agreement as well, but I think, I think we need to act sooner than later, so I don't know how long we want to advertise it, but I don't think it needs to be drawn out for weeks and weeks and months because we moved out a day or two.
I agree.
Not that we have anything pending to my knowledge, but something could come up any point in time.
Right.
Usually, these advertisements, the last, we would get a good, uh, boss just for a couple of weeks being out, just pretty local situation on the website. Person sees that you're going to be interested and do something about it, if they set it aside, probably aren't going to do it. Fourth word, I help out with. Is there something legal, local, legal, area?
No, nothing that seems to fall, but that would come, right, one, one thing is I help out with the code enforcement routine throughout the weeks, and, um, while there may not be a pending hearing, there are cases gone going because of the violations that are occurring, and so, I'm aware at least of the code enforcement having a backup, or beginning to have a backup, of sites that are, that would like to get some further progress on, so, but, just a little clarification, one thing.
Haven't been necessarily cited to, uh...
But I think they're waiting, I mean, I think that's, they've been through the notice, the notice violation process, inspection, I think they're waiting to get that citation, because there's been no improvement for their sites. That's all, it's not, I think.
Moving quickly is.
Counselman Williams, it's great, we probably need to get it going.
Counsel, uh, what do you think of what the, the city manager suggested, putting it in the, in local newspaper on our website?
I'll make a motion, table it until next meeting, we'll see, we, we turn it up for next couple of weeks, that's acceptable.
Right, as far as the, yeah, as far as making the appointment, I would table that, and, uh... I think it would, I think it would be good if.
Too short, too short. Maybe too short, you have to get two weeks' advertising put on next meeting, just to be honest with you.
Let's, uh, if we could get an advertisement out, maybe Monday or Tuesday.
That's, yeah, that's what I think, though.
Give us a couple of weeks.
Monday or Tuesday.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be before us February eighth, but it would be February twenty-second, potentially.
If we get it in early enough tomorrow, about two o'clock, we can get it in sometime.
We'll need it being in for two Sundays. Get it run.
We usually just run.
Run once.
Once.
So, this way, if your motion was to table the actual appointment.
We'll get, we'll, we'll get two weeks advertisement. Probably get back as soon, as soon as possible, if we're ready. I don't know, February eighth, definitely February eighth, one second. The way you want to call for this session, will you?
Really, if that stuff is going to be in, uh, on the twenty-second, we'll say.
We could, uh, I mean, we could certainly call if, if we need to.
If you read this Sunday through next Sunday, then you've got two Sundays.
Uh, you have two weeks to go to take it to the, the, like, tenth.
If you read this Sunday, you can do the following, so.
That's only a week. I, I always, it's been my practice to always go for two weeks, if you ask me, so. I mean, you know, if a person goes on vacation or whatever for a week or sick for a week, they miss it. Conference, whatever, like, that's why I'll always go at least two weeks. Give everybody that opportunity. I would hate to have somebody say, hey, I was on a conference that week, I didn't, I didn't see it, it's too late.
Okay, so the motion that we have is to table the, uh, actual appointment and to request the city manager.
Well, we're already opposed to D one.
Right.
Right, so.
So the, you want to move in that direction? You want to, to put together an advertisement and, okay. So make it formal, that part of your motion to, to table.
Table it.
And have the city manager put together an advertisement.
You want to have the position advertised.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, could you table this for the next meeting or you table it to a later date?
Table it to a later date. It's my understanding. And we can tell, we can certainly remove it from the table at the next meeting if we need to.
Table it to a later date, if you can, if that's something that's happened.
Exactly.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. And that is to table the appointment and request the city manager advertising. Do you have any comments or questions? Uh, actually, we did not have to, uh, not required by law, uh, to, to post it.
You brought it up, just to give the general public, uh, a couple, I didn't know about it, you know. And then I talked to Mr. Dorfus, I didn't know we had anybody that was in, just, I asked you that today.
I know.
Yeah.
I do now.
Yeah.
We've got two interested parties, so.
All right. You can have the roll call, please.
Last Mayor's bill?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Item C, Resolution Two Seven Four Four.
The resolution of the city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing funding of the housing and redevelopment authority in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to be used for professional services.
Mr. Exon?
Yes, sir.
It's good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
You have any questions that, uh, you got to ask of me or, you know, this is to get us, uh, some momentary funds to be able to hire professional, um, people that are going to need legal and we're going to need some, uh, an appraiser later on. So there are some things that we, we're, we're being required to do. And right now we're using the present staff and, uh, we're very happy with that. But, uh, I don't know how, how the council feels about us using their time. Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, are there any questions? I think, well, I'll say. We have no comments or questions. Roll call, please.
Last Mayor's bill?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Item B, Resolution Two Seven Four Six.
A resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving a second extension of the interlocal agreement for the city of East Ridge to provide fire and ser- police services to the city of Ridgeway.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve.
Approve the extension to February fifteenth.
Do we have any comments or questions? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on a minute, we have anything you'd like to add from?
No, maybe tonight.
Okay.
Their meeting tonight, same time, so I have no idea. I'll, I'll know tomorrow what their, how it will be.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the extension to February fifteenth. Roll call, please.
Last Mayor's bill?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Item E, Resolution Two Seven Four Seven.
A resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to approve the attached change order request number two for Mamet Foster Wheeler Environment and Infrastructure, Inc. in regard to the reconfiguration project of the I seventy-five interchange Ringgold Road at exit one.
Hey, do you want to make a, a change in, uh, my agenda memorandum? The amount of money that we're looking at here is fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and nine, seventy-four cents, not nineteen thousand and three fifty-four. Fifteen thousand, two twenty-two, seventy-four. Contractor had requested nineteen thousand going by end crisis approved under T-DOT regulations. Most we can charge is fifteen thousand, two twenty-two, seventy-four. This is to raise two existing manholes on the northeast quadrant of the interchange. One has to be raised to twenty-two feet. That will be, so it will be, it will coincide with the new on-ramp from Ringgold Road to I seventy-five. The other one is a four-foot ex- extension. So I'm requesting, they're out there today working twenty-two foot. That one they're doing sections, they, they actually need to bring in truckloads of dirt. They need to grade it and compact it, continuously compact it, and every four feet, they put an extension on it and build that up while the ramp is being built up. Right now that ramp is going to be twenty feet higher than the main grade way, the main grade level of today. I'm asking if you're considering to approve this, like, if that were moving forward.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any comments or questions?
Just to note, uh, they are right now, they're on track, it was out there this afternoon with the engineer as well as the superintendent for C W Matthews. They're on track, weather improving, keeping weather like we've had this weekend, you know, barding freezes like we had two weeks ago. We're going to have this done, done by first week of May.
They are closing the exit ramp.
They are closing one B starting next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, the thirtieth and the thirty-first, they're closing one B, so they'll go and be, one A is going to be the exit off of seventy-five. It will be signed, upper signage on I seventy-five in Georgia. Notify everybody, everybody gets off now at one exit, one A, they go up to traffic signal. They can turn left or right whenever the light allows them to do that or go straight. They're going to be starting on the first of February, the second, they're going to start tearing up one B, which is the central one. Everything is all going to be torn out.
Obviously, that is a permanent closure.
That's a permanent closure, yes. We're going to have only one exit off of, and that's the reason why we're doing it. You can come up to a traffic signal that will have four lanes. One, one or so going east, one or so going west, and then go straight to go onto Camp Jordan Park. That'll be the new line. And that will go into effect next week. Not all four lanes, but eventually we'll get there. That's it.
Anyone who, who has na- tried to navigate that area, uh, I think it will be a huge safety improvement to not have cars trying to merge off clover leaf. Uh, that will, that will go away, so, yay.
I have one more thought.
Yes, sir.
I just want to add something about that Humbert Bridge. Did anybody know if I picked up that?
Yes, T-DOT is aware of it, they've been on the contractor, the contractor is going to use asphalt to smooth that over. However, as you and I have talked about, I'm sorry, as you and I have talked about, I think that the threshold of that bridge abutment is slowly sinking. And if they were smart, T-DOT is smart, I would like them, I'd like to see them replace that bridge at the same time they do the I twenty-four, seventy-five intersection. I mean, I understand that's going to be hundred and fifty to hundred and seventy-five million dollars. Might as well bite the bullet down, get ours done, same project, because I just, I just, we've got a, a bridge abutment problem there. Bridges are going to go anywhere, it's, the edge is coming up to the, up to the bridge.
It hasn't got worse since we've had, had started the construction up there.
Right, right. And, and that, the, uh, seventy-five, twenty-four split project is going, going to be three bridge replacements.
Yes.
Already.
Yes.
Over on twenty-four, so.
Yes. Yes, we're looking at Germantown, we're looking at, uh, um, Moore and Spring Creek. So those, I just, we'll get it done now. It's an older bridge, been along for a long while, and I'm going to be pushing for that one. I'll be on the team when it, when we get to design, whether or not we can get through or not, it's something different. But we can push our, our state reps to look, to include the project at our bridge on Ringgold Road into the scope of the project for seventy-five, twenty-four.
What makes it? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the change order. Jim, if we can have the roll call, please.
Last Mayor's bill?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Item is approved. And that is the last item we have on the agenda. We had dealt with F and G earlier and then had the executive session between the work session and the regular meeting. So that is all. Just a reminder, February first, a week from today, we will have the, the dedication, ribbon cutting. I think there are some special things the fire department does, we may open a new station. So all of that will be taking place ten a.m., Thursday, February first. Thank you all for being here and we will see you next time.